Everyone had a chance to review the agenda? Any proposed changes? Okay. You want to agree?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, approved by consensus. Comments from the chair? Well, the comments I have, I think, are going to be taken up in items five and six. So, I get, uh, one thing we probably should talk about is the next meeting that we have planned, and we can talk about this again at the end of our meeting. See whether we need to have a meeting? Is basically what I'm getting at. We're not going to need a Memorial Day. So, I think at the end of this discussion tonight, we can decide if we feel we need to have a place to meet there, or we can just cancel that meeting and not reschedule it. Hard to mention that. So, that's it for my comments from the chair. Unless there's anything else anyone else wanted to add? General business comments from somebody whom the public has not on the agenda? There is no one from the present, so we will move forward to item five.
I think Tina did go with historic preservation.
Okay, yeah.
Eric was out with Sheila, so he was helping as well. And they couldn't muster a corner. So then Hough and Bob Shield hired a couple of people there. Everybody else left.
Was Bob a member of the committee?
No, but he's pushing his own services.
Okay, so three non-members. Did you have a discussion?
Well, I, no. It was sort of showing my favorite committee to discuss things with them.
Other things happen sometimes.
Yeah, for me. Those things, I said, and then they say it's all going to come back.
Well, we'll wait the update after the next meeting hopefully.
We have a meeting next week.
For that update. Okay, so, back to item five. Update from the City Council presentation. Mike, do you want to start us off?
Sure, I can give a quick update on that.
So first, I just want to say Mike did a fabulous PowerPoint explaining what went on in the last year, what we're working, you know, what we do generally, what we're hoping to do, and where we would like their support. So, helpful for framing everything for them, because there is a lot.
Yep, a lot of new people.
If you're a new councillor, I think there's a lot of different committees to orient yourself to.
Yeah, and just to get, um, to make sure the council's aware of some of the things that they, you know, just, they make assumptions and just don't completely understand. You know, Kevin was in the audience, was kind of watching the reaction of councillors on certain things, and some of them were kind of surprised to see that, you know, we were a department of four people, including me. You know, it's like, oh, the planning department's just four people, that's it. So, um, so there was those types of things. I thought it was, I thought it was good. I was tired, so afterwards, I, the next day, I had to go and just ask Bill. I'm like, that went okay, right? He was like, yeah, it went fine, so. But I thought it went good, gave, uh, just kind of an update generally on what the department does, what the Planning Commission was doing, and then we kind of kicked off a little bit of what we wanted, although we kind of had to pull back a little bit because the council is doing a strategic planning process this week to work on what they would like to accomplish as, as the new council.
I think it was perfect timing. We presented the desire to prioritize the city plan, and by prioritize, I mean allocate staff, resources for working on the city plan, and gave a proposal of how we would start to do that, um, right before their strategic goal meeting. So, hopefully that was worthwhile for us.
Yeah, I think it was good. Uh, it was certainly good timing, but we didn't get the opportunity to kind of get a decision back from them that said, yeah, go for it, because they're doing their more strategic work this week and next week, and hopefully, um, in a couple of weeks. Yeah, I think, I think we had a pretty good guess as to where people were leaning and what they wanted, so, uh, I think they'll see this as a great opportunity, not just for the, the city plan process, but just for all of their goals, because they really want to, you know, different councillors have different ideas of what they would like to do, but all of them kind of tie back to the city plan being an opportunity to roll those out and explain how we're going to accomplish the goal. So, so, yeah, I thought, I thought it went really well.
And, uh, maybe it's a good segue into item six?
Sounds like a good segue.
Update on the city plan, so. Mike did a lot of the talking, but I did elbow my way in.
Lose some elbows.
Well, um, Mike was explaining the process that we were envisioning for kicking off the city plan, and I fleshed that out a little bit more, and also stressed the amount of work that Mike does for us, and there's, how their support would be really important in ensuring that he would have adequate time to work on this endeavor. So, I was mostly bolstering the presentation that he provided, but then also elaborating a little bit more about the city plan kickoff process.
Any councillors comment on city plans in general or particular? I bet they don't know a thing about some of them.
We didn't get into any of the substance.
Yeah, we didn't, didn't get too much into the substance, but there were, I mean, there were a couple of them that were here from last year's reapproval, so Ashley and Anne and Rosie, and Jack McCullough was on the Housing Committee, so he's familiar with the plan. Yep, so, I think everybody's got a general familiarity, um, but none of them have been here to go through an actual readoption process.
That was pretty proventur-y last time, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, well, but I, I think that this process will be educational as it unfolds.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Me too. It's a great vehicle to have the council think about some of the broad issues that the city is coming up.
So, to label this, we're now talking about item six, city plan update discussion. So, as I mentioned, I elbowed my way to the table and introduced myself to the council and explained that we were talking about, we were kicking around this idea that we would advise representatives from the various committees, in fact, the entire committee, to come to a kickoff meeting where they can present their top, top goals, and in, in a five-minute presentation, and then stay afterward and socialize, enjoy refreshments, and, and then, um, kind of on the fly, I realized it would probably be useful if we had two of these meetings, because we have one where everyone hears what everyone else's goals are, but maybe we can give them a chance to go back and discuss amongst themselves with our own committees, whether anything could be tweaked or tailored to fit ducktail a little bit more nicely with some of the other committees' goals, come back together to another all-committee meeting, um, and then we could figure out priorities from there. And I figured that some of this process in the front end will help streamline later. That was my thinking. So, I, I suggested that, potentially having a second meeting to the City Council, and they really liked the idea. They do want us to check in with them, which makes perfect sense, and it seemed like that would be a great opportunity to do that after the second all-committee meeting. So, I wanted to get your feedback on this idea. The council was on board with the concept. It wasn't anything that we needed an official approval for, I just wanted to give them the idea of what we're looking to do.
So, what would happen with the second meeting? Would, would there be more discussion, or would it be a lot of pitching ideas?
So, I think, I think two things should happen, maybe, um, more discussion, we would have to structure that, and the way I framed it in the letter, which we can modify and anybody would like, uh, but I, I framed it as you could come forward and say your goals again, if, you know, if they've changed at all, but also where your committee thinks that those goals rank in terms of priority for the city goals, now that you've heard what some of the other goals are. Just to give everyone a chance to see how theirs fits into the broader picture. It's possible that every committee will say, our goal is the number one priority for the city, um, and we'll have to do it anyway, but I thought maybe giving them the opportunity might be useful exercise. What, what do others think?
I think there's some real value to it, to have everybody hearing anybody else's plans, and you're bound to vote some thought, like, yeah, we're going to go.
Yeah.
So, I like your idea of a second meeting.
Or if, if after the first meeting, presumably, there's some follow-up work for them to do in that second meeting, that it's a presentation of, like, everything that they've all submitted, but maybe curated in a, in a way that brings it all together together, you know, and the whole piece off, or I don't know.
I just don't know if we're going to be asking too much if we want product, as well as, because part of the goal of these meetings is to have people thinking conceptually without being too much attached to their work. I find that once you start actually working on something, you become, it becomes harder for you to be flexible in thought process. So, that was one, one thought. I mean, maybe the end of the meeting could be talking about what a actual product is that they should be doing. That's my only concern with that, otherwise, I'd say, yeah, let's do that.
Well, we could make a tentative second meeting. We, we can discuss the results of the first meeting amongst ourselves and decide what we, we think will be effective.
I think that makes sense. The idea of having something else that comes next is helpful, I think, though, for people, so they're not, you say, we're going to come and talk about goals, then we're going to come back and talk about just goals again. I think it's, it can be that, but I think it would be helpful to have at least, it doesn't have to be like a defined product or something that's done, but at least a next step, whatever that is, or some other planning element piece that we're, so that we're moving, so it feels like we're moving forward.
Okay.
I don't know what that would necessarily mean, but.
So, are we thinking not have the goals, like, necessarily stated in the first meeting?
I think that's important to have it in the first meeting.
Is it important to have it in the first meeting?
Yeah.
So, I thought, I thought I was hearing that you were moving towards maybe having to say, like, asking for them to come back with goals in the second meeting, and the first one being more of.
I was thinking they might revise their goals, but maybe not. Maybe that's not worth, maybe it's more infusing the whole.
Well, I mean, following up on Stephanie's, maybe the, the proposal would then be in the second meeting to revise your goals, and then to start thinking about what would be some of the strategies you might use to implement those goals, just to start to get them thinking about those next steps, so it's not rehashing the same thing. It is a little bit, but we're kind of taking them to that next level, which will be, all right, now let's start thinking strategically. If your economic development, what would you do to, you know, if your goal is to create more jobs, or to create more whatever, what is it, what's your thing that you're going to do to help to move that forward? Or energy, or transportation, or housing, or.
So, if we want to reframe the goals piece and say, um, or maybe, how about this? What if the letter says, we invite you to come, I don't remember exactly the word that I said, but, the second paragraph, at the kickoff meeting, we ask that you, our representative, and I have some template language here from your committee, present that committee's top three goals for the next 10 years in a five-minute presentation. So, I think there's some, I put some comment bubbles here to say, you know, do we want to ask for a range of goals, three to five goals, or limit it to three? And what do you think is the appropriate timeframe? I mean, 10 years or 20 years? So, I think, um, based on this conversation, we could say, top three goals, or however many number we want to do, for the next 10 years, or whatever length of time we want to do, but we could say in terms of, or we could use the language evolve, maintain, uh, transform, of how, I think we need to explain that a little bit in the letter too, though, if we're going to use that.
Yeah, if we wanted to, instead of using the word goals, if we want to pick a timeframe and say, in multi-year and 10 years, like, what, what would your committee like to see differently? Pick three things that are going to be different about multi-year and 10 years, and frame them in terms of, like, what are they maintaining, evolving, or transforming something about our community?
I like that, because it's more, with the content and not, can we, can we make, make sure it's exact goal language? That feels a little more concrete, because it's, I mean, there's, what are the concepts that we're trying to get to?
And then the second meeting could be, pick one of those goals, or whatever we'll call them, and do a five-minute presentation on the strategy with measurables of how you propose. We might get there, and then the other committee could look at your feedback.
Or just, what are, what are measurable targets for those? Like, how will we know that that will have happened, that we will accomplish wherever you wanted to change?
Mike, give them that, of all the committees.
Most of them.
Give them the basic idea of what we're trying to accomplish.
Uh, not, 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 not within this context, in, for all of them, but most of them have heard the, the speech.
About language?
Yeah, but they really haven't, I really haven't spent a lot of time kind of teaching them, I mean, we, given the idea of what we had thought about when we were going to do this two years ago, so.
Well, I think that's a big part of the all-committee meeting, is getting people in the same kind of process. I thought you'd want everybody over with your elements of the project, but.
Yeah.
Well, there hasn't been a lot of time to follow up with them to.
Yeah, I know.
Or else they're deciding that.
But if that's the case, then I think you're going to have to carry this, say, look, this is what a city plan is. We need goals and means to get there, and we need something to measure. I mean, that's critical about your style of planning, which is, tell me what you want, tell me how you're going to get there, and don't just put.
Yeah, there's a lot of hand, a lot of hand-holding to, to force people not to, you know, and it's for all of us to, to not take the easy road and just say, oh, well, we'll encourage it, or we'll market it.
Maybe at the beginning and the end of the first meeting, we should allow some time for Mike and the Planning Commission to address those expectations. And I also agree, I think Leslie said earlier, about explaining out the way that John described it, some concrete things that will matter, what expectations are about those goals in this letter. I think the better, the better we explain in the letter, the very first letter about this, the more they're going to provide us what we want, the better we do it.
Sure.
Yeah.
I like forming an idea, what, what do you want? How do you want to see this city developing when you're, you're in interest in the next two years? And stay away from the goals, it makes people think a lot. Well, then, if they come back and kick each other in, they'll be forced to put it in a super bowl, so, if they're not very far along in that process, they've got a lot of work to do.
So, for the tedious task of editing, I'm just curious what language we want to use for getting away from top three goals? What do we want to replace it with? I think I've heard some things kicking around, but I'm not sure I know how to edit this right now. So, maybe use some language.
Yeah, um, I can try editing right now if we want, um, text. Look at these weird bubbles.
See if the computer allows you to do it. Sounds like educating and then asking for whatever we come up with as language for the first meeting makes sense. Then, for the second meeting, asking for how they propose to implement that framework, whatever we want to call it.
What are indicators?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, what are the benchmarks?
What was the terminology you would use within the plan, when you planned to do goals, and then what term did you use for the things to get to the goal?
Yeah, we, we had strategies for the second set, and those were really kind of breaking into which I presented to council, which was into those permits, programs.
Yeah.
Projects, policies, so we're kind of breaking things into those, you know, how, how do you actually plan to accomplish those goals? Is it through regulations? Is it through one-time projects? And I think, I don't, we don't have to necessarily get into all the nuts and bolts, but we could certainly for the second meeting, when we send out the second letter, I think we just, I don't think we have to describe fully how we would have the second meeting in this letter. I would think we could just go and say, in the second meeting, we're going to have one where we talk about the concepts of how we would implement, or we would be asking you to come in and give a presentation on how you'd implement one of your goals, and we would give them, not necessarily those specific things, would you do it through regulations? We could do, I think, more leading questions. Would you do it through regulations? Would you do it through a program? Would you do it by?
Well, I think we could present that concept in the end of the first meeting.
Well, ultimately, we're supposed to pull all these things together, so, I mean, first of all, within this planning commission, this is worthwhile, never, whatever their plan is worthwhile, and how it would be, it would be, the second meeting is, are these goals incompatible, or are they compatible, or are they a certain thing? You know, I can see a lot of overlap, and I can see conflict, and there always is, and I imagine there won't be. I'd like to know what the conflicts are between the committees.
So, ask them to identify goals that they see as incompatible with the one that they're advancing?
Well, we have minutes, and we want to hear a lot about, but.
Transportation and energy?
No.
And their housing and.
Historical preservation is.
Falling for a.
Housing, which I don't think it does, but there is that point here, so we ought to crash now and see whether it's real or not, before we begin with goals and conflict, and if it is real, to what extent.
Instead of asking about conflict, can we ask about common ground now? Can we ask, like, how can historic preservation help housing, help them housing, help historic preservation?
Well, I'm saying, well, I just think it's going to land on our lap, so, when we get the goals, or anyone will call it, we're going to have to say, well, A is A, and B is B, and then really, we've got to talk to these people, because they're not going to work. We invite them to just read the set, show us that.
Maybe that's a charge at the end of the first meeting. So, now you've seen these other committees, and what they're looking at, where you see places where you can collaborate with other groups, or, I don't know, how else you can pull out, accomplish it in a positive way? Recognizing that we all have to be in the same channel together, that's the first moment for them to start thinking about what each group is trying to do, and how to, how to go with it.
One thought I had was, for the second meeting, when we talk about implementation strategies, to, probably better for a second letter, like, what you were saying, not to try to cover things in the first one, but, um, I think it might be worthwhile to try to, to, to give the categories of implementation tools, like regulations, one you mentioned. I think a lot of folks, uh, might immediately go to regulation, I think, in that world, and to maybe force people to think about a variety, using a variety of tools to get to their goals, require something to be addressed in every, like, preset of categories that we, that we pull out, so, and you know what those are, right? We already know, they're kind of big broad categories, that's their.
Yeah.
So, I, I think it would be a good idea to, to give, like, that kind of format, and ask for feedback on those categories.
So, there is.
We could, I mean, the other thing is, depending on how we structure the meeting, I mean, we've got the presentations from the different committees, and depending on how much of the time it takes, if there are any breakout groups, or whether that's maybe at the second meeting, we work more, or have a session where we have got, break people into groups, that's where you can try to tell, ask people to think about things in different, you know, think about how you, you know, how would you address this? If you had to address this through regulations, but now think about how you would address this through a program, think of, think outside the box, would, is there a program or a project that you could do to accomplish the same thing? We can require everybody to update their windows, or we can give a tax credit to people who do that. It's not a requirement, but, you know, we're doing that with the sprinklers. We had a sprinkler requirement that was, you know, obviously regulatory, and then we also had sprinkler tax credits to try to encourage people to do it. Now, they eliminated the regulatory one for homes, but the tax credit piece is still out there, so there's still an incentive for people to go through and put in sprinklers into their homes. And there's a lot of those that, certain ones are, have an easier time, you know, transportation's easy, to find regulation that works for transportation and a program that works, because the CIP program are replacing a bridge as a project, so, there you go. We want to put in bike lanes, we set aside money and we put in a bike lane. There's no regulation. So, they'll, they'll have easier, easier ones to go through, but I think some of the other ones might be more challenging.
We're going to have to get some thoughts, but our process after the second meeting, they're going to have to know that the buck stops here, at least as far as passing it on to the council.
And we told the council that, that was, that was part of my presentation last week, was to let the council know that part of this is deciding who's handling what piece, public transportation, is that Transportation Committee, is that Energy Committee, is that Community Services? Somebody has to be responsible for planning for that, and ultimately, the Planning Commission is going to be the arbiter of those areas where there's conflict, where Energy Committee might want to see those old historic windows get replaced, while Historic Preservation wants to protect them. Somebody's going to have to be the one. We'll make the first round of recommendations, and we gave them the heads up, they will be the ultimate arbiter of what our policies are going to be. But I don't think, we don't need to worry too much about, because I think there's going to be few of those conflict points, but they're going to come out.
Does this, would it make sense for the second meeting to be more of, like, a community-wide meeting, rather than just the committee?
We can do anything we want. We can have four meetings, we can have 10 meetings, I just.
The, the two suggestions from the council, one was that they want, they thought maybe we would benefit from a facilitator, rather than having us do it. And then the second one was that, uh, there was concern that while we were working a lot with committees, we weren't doing enough to do public input.
Right.
And whether a different, whether there's a different avenue for that, or this is built into this one.
Right, so if the second one is more of a community-wide one facilitated by someone like a Paul Costello.
I think you're right, or we could ask them to tell us what kind of community input I've had to date. Certain committees have had public input, others probably haven't, but it'd be kind of a way of telling this is public process.
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly ask them to explain that as part of their presentation.
Yeah. Yeah.
Would it, would it make sense to, to do the, we talked about using the second meetings to flush out implementation, and then for, once, after that meeting, it seems like this group will have a lot of information to kind of consolidate, and once we kind of put a draft together, we possibly have a, a meeting on that. So to say, this is what we've put together from everything we've got gathered so far from the committees, and then start the public stage at that point.
What about this? I like what everyone's saying, I'm just gonna reshuffle it a little bit.
Do you want that?
Yeah, I know. Well, we're bouncing off each other, it's helpful. So, the first meeting, I think we kind of all, we have to fine tune it, but I think we've got the concept down. The second meeting could be inviting public and have more of a community-wide discussion about the goals for the city at that point. And the third meeting could be developing the strategy for measuring whether those goals have been achieved in any way, and then we would have that to work with. That way we'll have the public input before we spend the time working on the strategy.
One, one thing support, that would be supportive of having a third meeting being about implementation, you'd make the committees longer, which could be a concern for some of the committees.
Say that again?
They would have longer between coming up with the goals and coming up with the implementation.
Yeah, yeah. We can do this as much as, I mean, I could just send an update to the council, oh, you know, we've decided to add in a couple of extra meetings, and, but the concept that I pitched was that more process upfront is probably gonna help us streamline later, so, I don't know, they seem supportive of that. Um, I think after we have all this information, and we've identified where the conflict points are, um, and how we can present what our conceptual recommendations are to the city council, priorities for the city, and get their feedback before we tell everyone, okay, let's start really digging in this.
One thing I've noticed through my day job is that if people are asked kind of in the abstract to comment on something, you get like social feedback. But if you put like a document in front of them to respond to, oh my goodness, you get all the feedback.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if we can think about that, if, whenever we do, like, reach out to the public, giving them something to respond, i- i- if our goal is to rather just kind of get a feel for things and have it be kind of, um, not reactionary, maybe not put something in front of them, but I think we would get a lot more feedback, we'd probably get more, um, stronger opinions if we put something in front of people. So just like some, this is something that can remind depending on what we want from the public.
Yeah.
I think we need to pull together a draft, and maybe give them something, so this is very much a draft.
Yeah, the problem though, I, you just have to balance that with the perception that we've made our minds up already. It's the, I mean, I, having something that looks really published can be a bit off-putting, I think.
And I think the amount of time it's gonna take to put together a draft, I think we do need to have something, but I think if we were, if we're focusing on our goals and aspirations, and just trying to get those ideas out to the public and start to say, this is where we wanna go, because ultimately, we're gonna have to sit down and take a lot of time to actually put together the writing of the, the document. When it starts putting pen to paper and reviewing it with committees and stuff, it's gonna take a lot of time. But we do wanna get their input early in the process, so they help us, the public helps to set the direction. If we think, oh, we're gonna go over this way, and they're really, you know, not gonna be interested in having that, that be a policy.
Kirby's point is well taken. See, something you may buy you, you'll pay attention.
See, it is, it's a catch twenty-two, though. You don't, if you don't have it there, then-
It's maybe not a good strategy to make people alarmed about what the planning commission's up to. But if you put, but if you did, were to put out a, like, a proposal that looks kind of official, like you were saying, you will get the most feedback that way, because people will be motivated by the concern that this is really helpful. Um, to, to make sure where the tools are real, people don't respond.
You can put out, you know, a lot of the committees' ideas from the first meeting and, and ours, and say, here's what we heard, what do you like, what don't you like, and what are we missing? That way we're not starting with, sure, we should throw out any horrible ideas right away, probably, but something tells me we're not gonna get too many horrible ideas, and get a sense of where people's priorities are.
How would we put that out, though? I mean, I think that's the, the piece that we've gotta figure out, the devil's in the details, and we don't wanna have a draft of the city plan, obviously, but we don't wanna have something that's too abstract, we won't get any feedback on at all. So, maybe I mean, we're gonna be working on this public document portal, for lack of a better word. Um, we could use that, and we just have to figure out how to present the information in a way on that, whether it's through a memo, um-
Everyone loves memos, right?
Well, sorry, I'm a lawyer, I write memos. Maybe not memos.
Like a bullet list of what the goals are.
You want a map, I want a memo.
But I, I think the, I, I think the point of having something that we still can respond to, that's something that's fun, that makes me nervous, having something that's like concrete.
And I never, practically speaking, we're, practically speaking, we're so far from that even being possible, that's the main-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But an outline that looks real, or looks like these are what the goals are, it looks like the goals will be at this stage, be something like that.
Yeah, we don't-
One page is actually what I'm thinking.
For a second meeting, I think we could have that from the first meeting, from somewhere between where we can have something that people can respond to, but also say that this is a moment of, well, we can give them an outline of, this is what our process is gonna look like from here, we'll have these other opportunities for you to get involved, and so that they know what's coming, so it's not like a draft to be on, like, you know, the working.
But I think, think if it's there, I think if we had, uh, even if it was just a, a one-page, not, not really typed, but if it was just, you know, that describes each of the committees that came up, you know, what, what ended up coming out from the parks committee, what came out from the conservation committee? This is, these were their goals, and this is what they wanted to accomplish in the next ten years. Now what does the public think about that? Um, you know, and you might hear from people that goes and says, all the parks committee ever cares about is Hubbard Park, we wanna see parks that aren't Hubbard's Park, and we wanna see parks that are in my neighborhood, and that's great, that's, you know, that's the input we would wanna hear from the public, is, is, don't worry about that, and if the goals for the parks committee were Hubbard Park, Hubbard Park, Hubbard Park, that might be a valuable thing to hear back, is, well, maybe we need to think a little less about that. I don't think that's their goal, I actually think their goal is actually the exact opposite, they are trying to get to reach out to these other neighborhoods, and-
As an example only.
As an example only, yes. But, I mean, it's the same idea, you know, what, what transportation committee, how they prioritize, if they say, look, our, our big thing is to prioritize complete streets and getting, and getting the bike lanes, and, and if you hear more from people that says, we're actually more concerned about expanding and building on our sidewalk network, or parking is the most important thing, then, okay, we, we could take that under advisement, that, um, but I think if we had just a, a brief thing for each of the committees, the public would have something to react to, to go and say, this is what we hear from the committees, what does the public think of the, the committee's ideas?
What if in between, after we have sort of an initial kickoff with the, the committees, we have an opportunity, like, a one-question survey that goes out, that asks people, you know, what would they wanna maintain, evolve, or transform, so that we collect those ideas, when we present them, it's not just the committees, it's like the committees and anyone who, from the public, who can submit at any time, um, and we can collect those in a centralized place.
The last play, I mean, that's really rigorous, public input, and I don't know, and I expect there'll be similar. But I don't know, how many meetings they have, I don't understand this.
So if we can promote, you know, alternative forms, ways for people to participate that aren't necessarily meetings, which don't work for everybody.
Yeah, I mean, now that I have a young child, I'm realizing why a whole demographic is missing during that hour, those two hours.
But I think the maintain, evolve, transform is a good basis to work from, because I think a lot of the, a lot of the comments that we heard in the zoning process, a lot of it came back to not trying to change my neighborhood, there was a lot of that main, maintain, and we don't want that to come across as being a negative thing, when, you know, it's like, you guys just wanna change everything, it's like, well, no, now, now this is the opportunity to go and say, there, if there are things you don't wanna change, that's as valuable as hearing about the things that you do wanna have changed, so.
Right, and be specific, don't say you wanna maintain the character-
Of your neighborhood.
Of your neighborhood, that's the most useless thing anyone could tell us. What about your neighborhood?
All right, so let's see, where are we are? Um, the first meeting, we're gonna ask the committees to have a representative give a presentation of areas that they would like to see maintained, evolved, or transformed. And it would limit that to three to five items. Uh, we'll also give them a little bit of an overview of how to use that language, and I think we're gonna have to do it in a letter if we wanna, if we want them to do that at the meeting itself. So I can take a crack at it and send it to you for editing, Mike, 'cause I'm probably gonna get something wrong. And then at the end of that meeting, we'll say, okay, we're going to take what you've told us today and write up summaries that we're gonna send out, or no, you think that we should just do a survey without, like, a cold one?
Yeah, I mean, we can put all of that up, what those responses were, but then we can also, people can see those, but they can also just-
Put out a cold survey?
With some introduction to, here's, we're creating a plan, but, but I don't think a whole lot necessarily.
So we could do that simultaneously.
How do we kind of let people know about how to do the survey?
I think Front Porch Forum will get us pretty far.
There's a lot of people in Front Porch Forum.
I assume we could post a link on the-
Send Kim door-to-door.
Yeah. You were volunteered as a good warning.
Second.
Um, I assume we could put a link on the city website, and then we could put a Front Porch Forum reminding people of it. And, yeah, and a call to a reporter.
About the bridge now.
Yeah.
The bridge now. And the second meeting, is that, where do we set a line for that? Are we gonna do more public input there, or are we gonna just take public input not in the meeting? And do a second meeting, talk about strategies for getting, accomplishing those goals?
Talk about the forum in the second meeting after I have the first.
Okay.
If we move towards like-
But I like using, um, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, I, I like still having a second meeting for a public input, even if it's just to go and say, this is what we've heard from the survey so far, give people, and, you know, some people, you know, give people at multiple venues to, to provide comment, and still use that as an opportunity to get more.
I think that the Union Auditorium could be good for that, by the way.
Oh, really? Okay, that, that hurts.
Focus, but, so it's not huge, but I don't think we're gonna have, I think if we were worried about, oh, very large turnout, we could do the high school or something, but, um, there's at the stage there, I'm, but, as you mentioned, the facilitator, and ask about, could go through the goals as they look like they are now, and get feedback that way, like, goal by goal, or whatever, whatever, and that. If we decide to make this a meeting about that.
Have people go around with their stickers.
Yeah, that's, I was just picturing people, yeah, each committee has its own little section in the room, and they have to convince the public that their goals are- Someone has to be standing there and talking about, oh yeah, these are the new, I think there's some, some sort of breakout like that, I think would be helpful, and they could start with, you know, the memory or something, but.
Okay. What is that other, the charrettes? Exercise, what's that? What is that?
It's a more urban design, I guess, I guess.
That doesn't tell me much at all.
Like trying to, like, solve some sort of design problem or something.
Oh, it's a problem, it's a problem.
Yeah, we give you, we, you get a hypothetical to start to work on, and it's supposed to start to get you thinking about how to, it, it's kind of an education slash public, you know, it helps to educate the public on, you know, uh, here's your map, how would you, where would you put the hundred new houses? If you had to put a hundred new houses in town, where would you put them in? And so you start forcing people into different scenarios where they've gotta start to think about, you know, do we put, you know, a couple in every place, or do we put them all in one place, or?
Okay. So, for our second meeting, I mean, I know Kim's opinion is that we should probably wait and see how the first meeting goes, which is a valid, valid opinion, obviously, and maybe that's what we wanna do. But the other suggestions I'm hearing are, um, we could invite the entire community to a big place, like the Union School Auditorium, and have an initial presentation about what we've learned from the survey results, and how that correlates with what we've heard from the committees in the all-committee meeting. Give, have more of a general opportunity for people to give feedback, or after that presentation, we could then say, okay, we're gonna have the committees in different sections of the room, and they're gonna be able to talk more about why this is something they want to see over the next ten years, and you can go visit them. So that way, people can go from one place to another. I do think there's value in having something like that, maybe not as a second meeting, but a- at some point where people can wander around and, and really understand why this should happen, or why these goals are conflicting, or, you know, just, what are, give more deep insight, and if you can access any committee at one time, well, stop shopping, it might be really useful. So, that being said, I don't think we have a clear direction of what we wanna do for the second meeting.
We could just, we could have a standard plan and then pivot from that, depending on if the first goes in a different way than we expected.
Yeah, we could be vague, say, we'll present next steps and get public input.
We think that no matter what, at some point, there will be a, an, an implementation-oriented meeting with the committee, right?
Yeah, so that's what the third-
That would be the third meeting, yeah. We're still gonna have a second-ish public meeting and a third-ish implementation meeting.
Yeah, I think that's out of the question.
We don't, we don't need to number the meetings, we have a future meeting, we will ask you for this.
Yeah, I just think if, um, if I can be as detailed as possible in the initial outreach, then it's gonna save me from having to respond to a lot of emails and phone calls, because people will understand what the process is gonna be.
Think of that, that first letter just being as, as, please present your ideas at the first meeting using these three terms.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Yeah, you have three slides and three minutes.
I was gonna give them five minutes, three.
Isn't there a lot of committees?
Quite a few.
Yeah, that's a question for Mike, it's not many we need.
Yeah, I'll have to go and, every time I start to write them down, I always end up with, keep finding more.
You give them three, seven, ten, five.
I think three minutes is good.
Okay.
And then we transition, that puts us on like five, right? And they'll have to send slides ahead of time, so you can have a long one.
They're just, they're just like going, they're on a timer.
I'll put you in charge of that.
Like, this is transportation, your energy's still talking, we're already on transportation, so.
We ask them to get, have like an on-deck thing, and they have to stand on deck.
You have to slowly walk those times.
All right, obviously, we're gonna put Stephanie and John in charge of-
The planners are good at planning events.
Yeah, I don't think we do need a facilitator. I could be the-
MC.
I could be the MC. We're all here today, folks, and then Stephanie's going to hold me until.
I'm going to switch the slide when we're done. When I decide to.
I hate sitting in the dark looking at a screen and some disembodied voice talking.
Yeah. Well, we.
I don't know how you're going to plan that.
Well, it can't be this, because I.
It can't be this. I'd like your idea of somewhere else, and maybe smaller, trying to. But those, you know, people somehow like PowerPoint, you know. That's a killer. People trying to read and some voices coming in, I don't know where they know who it is.
Make sure they're standing right next to the screen, or whatever's out of the house.
Yeah. But then, I'm going to shadow.
Three, three slides is a good idea. Three ideas, three slides.
I don't think we can get away from the PowerPoint altogether, Kim, which is, I think, where you're going, but.
No. I think there needs to be some visual cards.
Exhibits.
If you've got a presentation, if, if you've got a place where you can do presentations that's set up for it, you don't have to be in the dark. I mean, you can watch any of the, you know.
TED Talks?
TED Talks. And, you know, they're not all standing in the dark. They're standing in the light, and they've got PowerPoints going behind them. It's just a matter of getting the lighting correct on the screen.
Yeah.
So, where can I have?
I don't know. The facilities here, there, there might, there might be some here. I don't know what VCFA has. I don't know how good the Pavilion presentation is.
I think the planning department should check this out and find out how we can have an effective presentation.
And we can do, I mean, if we want the slides to look very specific, where we can set up one template and it wasn't the exact same thing, where it just says committee name, one quick thought, and remember the words that is. So, it's not like a huge paragraph on the screen. It's just two lines of text and your committee name.
Well, I, I like being able to see the speaker and have a person visible while something's going on behind him, or, I mean, plays out, but I think.
I think the auditorium should have lights, like, near the stage or the things, maybe make it less light on the back, so you can still see the screen, okay?
Well, I'm kind of going to negotiate with the last nation, I don't know where the lighting is.
So, I volunteered to call venues, and I haven't. So, I'm wondering if someone else wants to volunteer for the job, because it's available.
I think.
And I've got a lot of letters right.
I can't, I can't make any promises that the lighting's going to be the Kim's like in.
I don't know. It sounds like there's some pretty high standard.
Mike says I've heard of such a place.
Well, I've, I've seen presentations, I've been to places where they've had presentations, and you're not standing in the dark.
You would pick the education department.
Do you think?
The only concern is, is it dark enough for the, so you can see what's on the screen?
Yeah. Unless there's a place that's got a large screen television that.
I think I know what our first goal.
You think it can bring their light?
The letters are standing down here, and that's up there.
No. I think, I think we could, like, we could say, you're in this order, you need one person from your committee, and if this person's up, you know, they have five minutes, and then you need to be up here so they can go next. So, it's a quick transition, and people know, you're number 12.
I just think to hold the audience's attention, you have to be able to have a good visual of how that's going to.
So, do we have a projector available?
I think we'd have to look at what the location is. We can get projectors, probably.
We can.
We've got, the planning department has one that's now, I think, on loan over at the senior center.
Should we have a portable screen?
We do, but it's not, it depends how big you're looking at.
So, how do we, isn't there, there's movie night on the state lawn in the summer. How are we doing that? There's a, same question.
We solve.
Right?
Right, just on, right on the state house.
That's, well, yeah. But, I mean, that's, that's the equipment that we need is for that. So, I'm assuming Montpelier Alive puts that event on. So, maybe just a call to Montpelier Alive could be, give us the info we need about the equipment we have available.
Yeah. Dan Groberg may have some ideas.
No, I mean, a projector can go onto a wall as long as it's white. So, if we have a good wall, then we don't need a screen, but.
Well, the Union School, but they don't have a lot of AV stuff, I expect.
They may, but I was just asking to see if we were flexible, if we can bring our own or not.
Well, the mayor might have a point of view on this stuff.
Yeah. It's going to be a small projector like this guy.
Well, I mean, she's, that's her business.
Projection.
Educating people.
Oh, yeah.
Projection. That's another story.
That's, that's our next, that's our first city goal.
Okay.
Is a, is a presentation space.
We can't do anything without a screen.
For the first meeting, you want people to watch a projector, though.
We want to do, yeah.
I can find a venue where that's possible.
I think we can make it reasonable, maybe look out for the people who are worried about.
I think the, the on-deck thing is going to be.
We'll need a second projection, projector to say who's on deck, but you can handle that.
Someone in the back can, cards out, they have like how much time you have left? Remember that from, like, law school, when you have a.
Does that person also have the button, the next?
Place of the unit.
Well, we have some fine tuning to do for our first meeting, but I think all that is. Okay. So, you'll check into equipment and venue? And I think that the timing for this is going to be the last week in June at the earliest, because we have to give everyone enough notice.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, June or July?
Yeah. See what availability is. And what day of the week and time do people think would be good? I mean, nothing's going to be perfect for everyone, so, I mean, we could do it at this time. Monday evenings are our usual time, but that might not be.
I think that's the way to do it, because my schedule gets sort of cluttered on other days.
You're meant to be retired.
I know. I'll be cluttered.
Okay. So, I guess, you know, our meeting time would be June 25th. So, June 25th or, I don't have another calendar in front of me.
And I'll keep my fingers crossed. It's usually hay time, but I'll keep my fingers crossed that it.
Actually, I'm supposed to be gone that week. Let's, we push it to July.
Well, okay. And then, July 2nd probably sounds like, yeah, not a good day.
Well, we're second and fourth, so.
I'm gone the first two weeks of July.
July, June, I don't know. Is it July 16th?
You still gone the 16th?
No. I'm not. Did you just say you're on the 13th?
I'm going the first two weeks.
I'm on the first.
So.
Second or fourth Monday in July?
So, July 9th or 23rd?
Second and fourth, not, it's 9th and 23rd. There's also a fifth Monday in July, not that, I think we want to push to late July.
I'll shoot for July 23rd, and then we'll see.
What if we do an off-week for us? What about July 16th?
Oh. That's DRB. Development Board.
More buddy notes.
We'll just cancel their meeting.
Yeah.
I think Commission could do that, right?
You're playing our plan.
So, how about July 23rd or 30th, 30th thing about that day?
Oh, right. Because the DRB doesn't meet on the 5th, right?
Yeah. Nobody meets on the 5th.
Okay. The 20th or 30th. Thank you, Kirby, yes.
I think my turn is up.
Everybody's going to get reappointed.
We all get, we all get kicked out the next month.
You're all getting, you're all getting reappointed.
What did we do wrong?
In October?
Put some punch, but.
Was there a, a charter, charter change? Yes. Yes. Because what we've had in the past for the charter was that everyone gets appointed for two years, regardless of when you get appointed. So, it's not like a seat that everyone, we're going to reappoint in the June meeting. And, you know, if somebody leaves in October, they're reappointed to finish out that seat for the next year or two years, or whatever's left. So, that's not the way the charter's written now. So, what we have.
Is my turn extended because of the charter change? Or is it up?
They're going to go through and reappoint everybody's seats. So, everybody, presumably, they're going to reappoint most of everybody, I would think.
I think there's four of us in the same.
Aren't we supposed to stagger?
Yeah. And they're, they're going to go back and stagger everybody and have a conversation.
Do we know who's up now and later?
I think that, I mean, I haven't heard, but I know if legislature's going out, I assume they've approved our charter change. So, probably in the next few weeks, the council's going to go through and reappoint, because they've got to redo the DRB as well, who's really messed up, so. They've got nine members of a five-seat commission, so. They have plenty of alternates for any application.
Just like a house gets cluttered after a while, got to clean it up.
Yep.
You have a wood stove.
Yeah. Okay. So, the next thing is, do we want to talk about technology in the context of this letter? It sounds like the letter itself is going to have enough to address without talking about how we're going to do file sharing. So, we could do that verbally at that meeting.
Presented at the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I did talk to Seth beforehand, and where we ended up allowed us to say Seth could go home, because I don't think necessarily would have had a lot to go over, although I wasn't, we didn't ask about if we have any web options for public input or not, but we could follow up and ask. The, the upshot, though, was that Seth will create essentially a folder on the city's Google Drive, and then give me edit ownership over that folder, for which I can add everyone so that they can edit it. And within it, we can create essentially a framework in the form of either forms or Google Sheets for how we want these different elements of the planned structure. So, you know, part of it will be like the what, so like, you know, the goals and measurable objectives. And then, like, the how, so actions, policies, or strategies, or whatever you want to call them. And then, identify with all of those, what do we need to know? You know, like, is it going to cost money? Who's going to do it? When is someone going to do it?
Is it a high priority? It's a low priority?
Right. Collect things in a systematic way, and then allow all the committees to have their own if they'd like. And we can just have them all funnel into a single, single place so that you can see which ones are actually, could be combined, or. And it also allows us to be totally transparent, so we can allow anyone to have a view, access to what's in there. And, and also, the other part of this was to create essentially a site, like a page for the plan that we could all control and add to and edit fairly easily and quickly. So, that'll, could be a landing page for anyone to go, either to find out about what's happening or to provide input. And also, a place for all these other documents, like the, you know, economic development strategic plan that was developed, or the, all the net-zero Montpelier plans, you know, they can all, we have one centralized place where you can go get a lot of that, that background information.
That's great.
Are there questions or thoughts, concerns about that?
You work on this, because I don't know anything about it. It sounds like you haven't any control.
Yeah.
You do the next meeting, you can give us a quick tutorial of how you're envisioning it working, and then we can provide that for the all committees. We'll just make sure we all understand it first.
Yeah. Throw, throw some drafts around. If anyone else wants to try to tackle that initial piece with me, let me know.
So, here's what I see as the next steps for this. So, I'm going to redraft this letter and send, send it first to Mike, because I'm going to be introducing the language of maintaining and transforming.
Okay.
Then I'm going to want to make sure I've described it correctly. And then, I will send it to the group. But we're going to need the venue information before I, I send it out anyway. So, I think, I'm going to ask you to take a look at the letter draft where I sent it to you, but also, if you could put together a list of all the committees we need to send it to, that would be very helpful. Kirby's going to work on finding a venue for July 23rd and 30th. John's going to work on the background, the, the, the Google Drive shared doc stuff. Stephanie, are you up for drafting some language for a survey?
Sure.
That we could all work on or take a look at at the next meeting? Because we're thinking about sending that out, putting, making that available to the public simultaneously with our first meeting. So, it doesn't need to be for our next meeting, but I just wanted to put it on the radar. And I'm trying to think what I can assign Kim, but I don't think there is anything else.
I think you're just fine.
Could you be my cheerleader?
You need to pick it up to at least once the next.
Well, you're going, yeah, you're going to Historic Preservation. You've been a lot. I think that's it. Is that, is there anything else that you want to think of with this? Okay. Okay, we're done.
More than probably another minutes.
Okay. Yeah. So, next item. Yeah. There you go. Consider minute, item seven, consider minutes from April 23rd. Kim just moved provol. Have we got a second for?
I was a year or so.
Oh.
I'll say, I have a comment.
John.
Okay. Discussion. Kirby has a comment.
Um, I, this doesn't need to change really, but just wanted to point out that it says that I had talked to Eric from Historic Preservation, and Eric wants the committee, which I interpret to mean the Historic Preservation Committee, to provide guidance for historical preservation. I don't recall Eric saying that. I don't recall saying that exactly. It may have been, I wasn't being very clear of what I was saying. But, so just to, just to clarify for everyone, in case they have that impression.
Well.
Eric and I just talked about opportunities for historic preservation to be, that committee to be used to work with us in the future. The topic we were talking about was to address affordable housing and stuff like that.
Probably just put a detail and make it in here.
Yeah.
So, if you have.
I don't, I don't, this doesn't need to be a change.
Well, we want them to be accurate, and if there's some things.
Yeah. It's a little vague as to what committee you're referring to. They say Doug Eric.
I would say it's just, instead of Eric wants, say, Eric is interested in working with the planning mission going forward.
Oh, okay. Could I, so it's really confusing. If that's a motion to amend, that's right.
Yeah. So, okay. We'll do that. Any other discussion? All those in favor of Kirby's motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
There is a motion to approve the minutes.
It's still on the table.
Okay.
Kim, Kim and John are still on the table.
John's your second. I was wondering if we needed to do that. Okay. Is your, your second still applied to the, to amend the minutes as, to approve the minutes that's been, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. They're amended and approved. Final item is adjournment. Do I have a motion?
My motion?
Awesome.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.